Order, this is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held March 19, 2019 at 6:00 PM. If we could, please have the deputy clerk take the role.
Councilmember Alt House.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Holes.
Here.
Councilmember Hargie.
Here.
Councilmember Narin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Henry.
Here.
And Mayor Linsky.
Here. May please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. So, council members, do we have anything to share? Please.
On Friday, myself, City Manager Corbin, and Chief Gesell attended a meeting with Senator McSally, was a part of her fifteen-county, two ears and one-mouth tour where she is traveling around the state, hitting all fifteen counties in the state, and visiting with individual communities throughout each county, finding out what our concerns, our needs are, our wants, and our desires, and at the same time telling us the things that she's been accomplishing at the Senate, and what she plans on doing for us in the future. It was a very enlightening meeting. And, Mr. Corbin, do you have anything to add?
No, I agree. I was, it was an honor to meet her, and she seemed to be in tune to the needs of Arizona and rural Arizonans, and she did seem to care. I mean, she wanted to listen, and she heard our ideas. The Chamber hosted this meeting, so there were a lot of different viewpoints provided to her, and I think that, you know, she's had some things happen in her life that makes her a good fit for some things at the federal level right now, so I too was also impressed.
Great. Okay. Anything else from council? Okay. Well, Vice Mayor and I last weekend attended the, was it last weekend? No, the weekend before last, excuse me, attended the St. Patty's Day Parade, St. Patrick's Day Parade in Sedona. Much shorter than our Christmas parade. Just a quick walk before you knew it was over, but it was a lot of fun. They had NAU students come down and volunteer, so just great, great event, great support. And then, the Comic Expo is coming up this Saturday, so I'm gonna connect with my geeky side and bring my family up there. It's a great event, been there in the years past. And, Mr. Corbin, have you got anything to add?
Well, you stole one of mine, very excited about that. The Library to host that over at our Community Recreation Center. Couple other things. The last time we talked about the cleanup from all the rain and the flooding, we left a group out, and I wanted to add them. There was a, the DIS golf course over there needed some work, and there was a group of citizens who came together to help clean that up and get it operational again, so forgive me if I get the names pronounced wrong, but Stephen Martin and Ivan Bingson, David Rosso, Avery Surplus, Doug Blinkenship, Ethan Hartz, and Anthony Lozano. So I want to thank them for helping us get that back into the condition to use.
Right.
If you haven't noticed, Mingus and Maine is a little messed up right now. They're working on the water lines, that'll be going on for just a little bit. We'll have things posted as things change on our Facebook page. All right, okay. Is that my sign? Am I talking too much already? Oops. There's still time to sign up for the Brian Mickelson Memorial Run Walk that'll be held Saturday, April 13th, beginning at 6:00 AM for those early risers, I guess. I didn't check the start time, I don't know if I can be there that early, but we'll see.
You have to.
Yeah. The Library Board Meeting is tomorrow at 5:00 at the Library. Parks and Recreation Commission is Tuesday, the 26th at 5:00 PM at the Recreation Center. The Historic Preservation Commission will meet on Wednesday, March 27th at 6:00 here in the Chambers, and the Airport Commission will be meeting April 3rd at 6:00, also here in the Chambers.
All right, very good. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to presentations. We have one presentation tonight from Jacobs Engineering and Yavapai County Public Works. We have Mr. Dan Cherry and, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Winnicky.
Mr. Mayor of Council, tonight we have a presentation on the Verdi Connect project with Yavapai County Public Works Director Dan Cherry. And then Nancy is also here from Jacobs Engineering, they're doing the study for the county, so I'm gonna turn this over to them and run the slides.
Very good, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for having us here. I'm Dan Cherry, I'm the Public Works Director with Yavapai County, and we have a little presentation here that we're gonna run through tonight, just to kinda allow the community here, citizens of Cottonwood, to share their voice on this project, give you a little update as to where we are on things. So, for those of you that have heard of it before, the Verdi Connect is a project that the county has undertaken to basically make a connection between State Route 260 and Cornville Road area. We're gonna talk a little bit about activities we've done to date so far. We had some public meetings last fall, one of which was here in Cottonwood, and we'll talk a little bit about what we've been doing since then, go over our project purpose, and then our next steps. So, for those of you that are familiar with it, you may remember that this connection here brings together this kind of idea of connecting Cornville Road to 260 with an additional north-south route somewhere in between 89A and I-17. We have a fairly large study area that we've been looking at as part of this, but the need for it goes back to identifying, to it being identified back to 1999, the original Verde Valley Transportation Study, and it's been touched on in several other studies that have occurred since then. So, in, this was made a priority by our board, the County Board of Supervisors, to initiate this study, which we call a design concept report. Back in early of 2018, we brought on Jacobs Engineering, which Nancy is here representing that firm tonight, to basically identify alternatives, make a selection for an alternative where this corridor would be, and maybe start working on preserving some right-of-way for that, but we didn't have any funding in place at the time to actually construct it. It was kind of early planning stages for that. As I mentioned before, we had public meetings in the fall, in Cottonwood, in Camp Verde, and then we also had another one on the Yavapai Apache Nation. So, what's been going on since we had those public meetings? Well, our big news, and I'm sure you've all heard, is we were awarded a grant. Last summer, we'd applied for this grant, this is a federal grant, and you know the feds, they like their acronyms. This is called the Build Grant, which BUILD stands for Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development. It's a mouthful, and it says it's kind of an extension of what used to be Tiger Grants, which I think the feds ran for about eight or nine years before they'd been converted to this, and I expect we'll see more rounds of Build Grants in the future, probably round two this summer is my guess. But, it's a program that is investing in road, rail, transit, and port projects around the country. We applied for a $25 million grant, which was the maximum amount you could apply for as part of this grant for the Verdi Connect project, and amazingly enough, we were awarded this. I thank our consultants, were a huge part of a very successful application, but as part of that, we also sought a tremendous amount of support from the Verde Valley, and I'd say every single community, including the nation, all provided some support as part of that grant application. We got support from our federal representatives, our state representatives of the area, quite a few dignitaries, and it really, I think there were thirteen or fourteen letters of support with this grant application as a total that went in with it, and it really, I think, carried a lot of weight. This project is really quite ideal for this type of grant program. We have a little statistics on it. Nationwide, there were 851 applications that went in, and of that, they only awarded 91, so roughly 10% of the applications were awarded, and this was the only project in the whole state of Arizona to be awarded as part of this, which is a real feather in the cap of the Verde Valley. So it gives us $25 million to play with, so to speak, on this project, but in doing so, now that we have federal dollars involved, we have a whole new list of requirements that are expected upon us, and this is partly why we are here tonight. The grant requires that we expend the funds fully by September 2025. That should not be a problem, with the exception that we need to go through a pretty extensive environmental assessment process that Nancy will talk about here in a moment. So with that, I'm gonna have Nancy come up and expand on the NEPA process, which is the federal requirements for us to be able to expend these federal dollars, and invite all here to give us their voice in this project, so thank you, and Nancy?
Thank you. Evening.
Good evening, everyone. So, the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969 is basically saying that we need to disclose, study the impacts of an action and disclose them. We're going to do this, the Federal Highways, the Federal Highway Department is the agency that is going to oversee the environmental component, as well as other components of this, they're the ones who have issued the grant. So we're working very closely with Federal Highways, and together, well, they told us it's going to be an environmental assessment, so that is what the level of document we're preparing right now. It does require a large public outreach, and that's why we are here, as Dan mentioned, to get everybody's thoughts, comments, concerns. There's a number of ways that we're going to do that through meetings, to get the word out, through public meetings that will be coming up, as well as through agency meetings. We'll be working very closely with some other federal agencies, as well as local and state agencies. And then, this is part of our scoping process, which initiates the whole NEPA process, and we have until the end of March to collect comments, and so we have, I'll tell a little bit more in a minute here about different ways to give your comments, but if we could get as many comments as possible for the 31st of March, that would be perfect. So, next step, we're going to be doing alternative analysis after we get all the input, so that will help us make some good decisions about where this road should go. There's no location selected at this time, it's just simply what are our options, what are our concerns, what are our limits environmentally or terrain-wise, all those sorts of things, so. As I mentioned, we have until the end of the month to get comments. We're, I've pretty much touched on all of this, but so far, we started this back in June, actually, we put a website up, it's verdiconnect.com, there's a lot of websites, a lot of information out there. The one that has our specific project information is www-verdiconnect.com, and on that site, you can go on and work with the interactive map and say, "I think it should go here," and we will consider that. We're gonna look at everybody's input and try to figure out what works from a lot of different perspectives, including people's opinions of it. So, we've, like, I think got in the neighborhood of 600 comments so far, we're hoping to keep that number coming in. We're also going to be meeting at the end of this month with a whole bunch of agencies to initially kick the NEPA process off with them. We're going to continue to disseminate information, we've had some newspaper ads, email blasts, radio spots, we're trying to get the word out any way we can, so if you come across someone who doesn't know about it, share this information with them, and hopefully we'll get some additional input. This is how you can give us information. I've got a few cards and some comment forms here that will be, sorry, you said taken across the street?
Yep.
They'll be across the street at City Hall, that could be picked up, but this is the information that's on those cards or comment forms. You can mail your comments, you can write them on your own paper, you can use a comment form and mail it to the address shown there. We've got www-verdiconnect.com, you can go online and leave it electronically, just click on the Contact Us link, or you can call our phone number there and give your comment by phone. And we'll also be having meetings in May where additional comments will be taken. So, the project purpose is basically to connect areas that are divided by the Verde River, which runs between Middle Verde Road and SR 260 through the Apache, the Yavapai Apache Nation, as well as onward beyond that, but dividing that area from the main road towards Cottonwood to reduce out-of-directional travel that happens as a result of that river posing a physical barrier, to provide alternative emergency route access, to support planned economic growth, and to access the Verde River by providing a bridge crossing. So, areas and issues, right now there's a long commute. There, the people on Middle Verde to get towards Cottonwood have to come out to I-17 and then continue on to 260 and back up. Same with the north side of, or maybe east side of the Yavapai Apache Nation. There's also a lot of congestion up in the Cornville area, and we'll look at this a little more on some of the next slides, but that's the only way in and out of that corridor, and there's limited actions, limited options for Lake Monizuma area to get in and get services. So, emergency access is one of the things that we looked at in preparing the Build Grant application, and it would, with having to go around, it adds time to the emergency access, so it would improve the services that could be provided to people living in that area, as well as other things like multimodal, you can't ride your bike across the river, but it's kind of a long hike to go around, or kids trying to get to the school bus, having to go around to get to 260 where the school bus picks up. So there's a lot of different ways that having a bridge access would serve the community. If I-17 gets closed down, or really any of the routes within the court, within the study area, the detours are very lengthy, and when there's already congestion, that's just gonna compound that problem. So, having to go up and around is, if there was another north-south route, it would truncate that detour significantly. So here is a picture of the model traffic situation. The picture on the left is the existing conditions, and the picture on the right is the predicted traffic for 2040. And green means everything's flowing smoothly, yellow, it's getting a little bit backed up, red is probably bumper-to-bumper. And as you can see, there's that area up near Cornville, there's some different spots around that are currently bumper-to-bumper at times, not all the time, but at times. But those situations, and 260 is flowing pretty well with the widening that's happened, but when you go out to 240, it's already starting to be congested. Cornville Road gets congested all the way back to Beaverhead Flat, and basically, the whole area is just slowed down, and it's just, the population's coming, there's growth happening, and the infrastructure needs a little boost to be able to keep up. Excellent. So, right now we don't have any alternatives, as I mentioned before, but we're taking a look at previous studies. This has been studied, as Dan mentioned, for a long time, so there's some previous studies that have looked at different possibilities. We're gonna be looking at all the physical, what's the terrain like? What, are there endangered species? Yes, there are. Where are they? You know, taking a look at those. How can we best avoid all these critical elements like endangered species, cultural resources, socioeconomic impacts, and try to fit in alignment based on those criteria? We're gonna get all of this information, we're gonna weigh different options, we're gonna look at them on a map, and this process will come out with multiple alignments. Those alignments will be brought back to the public in May, and at that point, we'll be taking additional input about what people think of the alignments, and that'll help us to refine until we can get to a point where we can find a single alternative. So, the study process is kind of a three-pronged approach. We've got engineering going on at the same time, we've got public outreach going on, and environmental studies are going on. We're in the scoping phase right now, which is that first column, and then we're going to be moving on to this alternatives development, and finally coming up with a single alternative, which will go into the final design concept report, and the final assessment will assess it. Excellent. And this just kind of gives the timeline in a different format. We've got the data gathering and public outreach going on right now, we're gonna have public meetings in May. Preferred alternative will be selected shortly thereafter, at which point the environmental assessment will really take off, and refine, and really get down to the bones about where things are. And then, in the spring of 2020, there will be a public hearing on the draft environmental assessment, which will then be finalized, and if an action alternative is selected, then construction will begin right then after that. So, one more thing. So again, what we're really after tonight is the opportunity for you to share your thoughts and input, and provide that to us so that we can make some good decisions.
Very good. Do you have any questions? Or comments to share? No? We did receive one call to the public notice from Mr. Zach Wolf. Are you here this evening? Thank you for being here. So, we do limit your comments to five minutes, but thanks for coming out tonight.
Just real quick here, thank you, Mayor and Council, for hearing me tonight. I, my name is Zach Wolf, and I live in Middle Verde, in Camp Verde. I'm not a Cottonwood resident, but I think it's important to hear both sides of what's going on here, and to hear another opinion of this. So I own, I own a ranch in, at the end of Middle Verde Road, and my ranch is one of Verdi Connect's routes that they've been looking at right now, it's coming back through our property. We moved to Middle Verde because we like the solitude of that area. The people of Middle Verde, and I speak for the majority of them out there, not everyone, but a vast majority, we chose that commute. We chose to be out in an area that was removed from the traffic and all of that, and we'd like to keep it that way. I understand, you know, what the Verdi Connect's trying to do, I understand that, you know, we want the towns to grow, we want the cities to grow, we want what's best for our economies here. And going back and looking at, like, transportation plans, I really started researching this, I became aware of this project around 2005 when I bought my land. I've gone back, looked at the transportation plans back to 1999. If you were to review the transportation plans, they say that the widening of Cornville Road would eliminate the need for any Verdi Connect or any other road in the area. So that's one option. You know, we're looking at the river as, as a barrier rather than a resource, and for our area, especially the Camp Verde area, you know, we're basing ourselves about, around being an agricultural community yet again. I run a cattle ranch in that area, I have an irrigated property, we love what we do. And the river is a great resource, it's what makes all this happen. Looking at it as a barrier, it's, you know, you're looking at one of the only areas that's still an untouched corridor for wildlife in this entire Verde Valley between all of our towns. Do we want to disrupt that? Is that, is that for the greatest good of everything we're trying to do? February of this year, the river below my house, and we had the 50,000 CFS flood, that area where you proposed to put the bridge across was almost three-quarters of a mile across. You can see video on ABC 15 of myself doing a swiftwater rescue of two horses from that river. I don't see how you, you know, we're talking bridge, the length of the Golden Gate Bridge or something to go across here. Does that make sense? Is that a good use of our funds? Is that a good use of our resources? When the Verdi Connect did their meetings back in September and October, I did both of those, and there, you know, there's a lot of good information, there's a lot more public information needs to come out. At that time, 10% of the comments on their website were actually from the study area. The other 90% are from people outside of the area saying, "Yeah, great, put a road in," you know, with no, with no concept of what we're actually, what we're building and what we're destroying by building. The, they mentioned the I-17, and the problems with that, so the area of I-17 that you'd be bypassing by Cornville Road to Highway 260 is about a four-mile length of road. We had a I-17 shut down over the summer from an accident at Table Mesa, and it shut it down to Middle Verde Road. A Verdi Connect is not gonna change that. And the terrain that we're looking at to build this road is absolutely rougher than a corn cob, and it's gonna be a huge expense of, expensive public funds. So, just really want you to please look into this further, and let's, you know, if we're gonna build something, let's build it right. Let's build something that's right for the future, for the long term, and make sure we're making the correct decisions for all of our communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. I'm hoping that you did go through the process to provide your comments. Okay, very good.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Anything else from council on this? Anything else from our presenters?
Just wanna say thank you, and certainly, we've heard from Mr. Wolf, and certainly, his opinions and his thoughts are valuable to us, and thank you for sharing.
Absolutely. I'd like to talk to you a bit longer if you have.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, thank you for giving us the time tonight, and we'd love to hear more from you if you think about it later, and you wanna
Very good.
...talk about it, or submit comments, whatnot, we gladly accept them all, positive or negative. This is part of the process, and we aim to be very transparent in this process.
Very good, okay.
Thank you.
We're happy to host you again to further presentations as needed.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on, if there's nothing else from council, to call to the public. And this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. And we do have one request tonight for call to the public, and there's yellow forms in the back, folks, if anybody else would like to address the council tonight. Ms. Rose Ortiz Unruh. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rose Ortiz Unruh. I live at 324 South 15th Street. I welcome new members of the City Council. I applaud and have admiration for those of you that serve on council. You clearly have a desire to do the best job you can for the city, and I appreciate that. I want to speak to you on two separate items this evening. I hope you will take to heart each point when making decisions for budgeting, planning, growth, and the success of the city. First, my day job is Realtor, but I have also been a part-time employee of the City of Cottonwood since May of 2010. I teach six classes per week at the Recreation Center, and let's be clear, I love it. You know that I have some very important things to say when I skip my class in order to come talk to you fine people. I have been a huge advocate and cheerleader for our wonderful recreation facility since the idea came about it years ago. Anyone who attends my class can tell you the love I have for it, the complex, my community, the patrons, and the format I teach. The records will show that in fact, my class has been consistently the best-attended class for the last nine years. The problem, I have never received a merit or cost of living raise. In nine years, I have an excellent employee record. The city budget allows for 4% to 5% merit raises for the fiscal year 2018 and 19. I am told this pertains to full-time employees. Please take note, there are more part-time employees at the Rec Center than full-time, about 80%. A couple of days ago, I was invited to the Employee Appreciation Event scheduled in April. This is the first This is the first time in nine years I've been invited. It has always been for full-time employees only. And I ask you, what does this say to all of us part-time employees? We don't appreciate you. Raises are only for full-timers, along with benefits, paid holidays, insurance, you see where I'm going with this. It is instances like this that cause turnover and poor retention in any employee. We are the face of this facility, and we represent you. Previously, it was budgeted by city council to pay a headhunting firm $21,000 to find the new city manager. This city has an HR department, a city clerk, and at the time, a full-time city manager. All of these very well-paid individuals could have placed an ad on Indeed, Monster.com, LinkedIn, to compile a short list of candidates for you to interview. That $21,000 would have went a long way in raises for your part-timers. It is always mentioned that the Rec Center is not making a profit. Therefore, will always be budget constraints and constant pressure to cut back. I say, stop it. The Recreation Center is here. The community supported spending the money to build it. So you should love it. You should embrace it. You should use it, and for goodness sakes, you should support it. Or you should sell it. I know many people who have not joined or who have not remained members because they feel penalized by not living in the incorporated portion of the city. We know fitness centers are profitable businesses. Alienating a part of the population because of the city boundary is not working. If it was, there would be no reason for a new fitness center to open in town that charges 10 bucks. I implore you to take care of your employees, not just the full-timers, not just your executives. Your employees shop in this city. We dine here, we live here, and we vote here. Item number two, I bet you can't wait. Cottonwood needs affordable housing. On this, we can all agree. One way the city has approached growth to the area is by allowing developers to produce higher-density neighborhoods using as little as three-foot setbacks. This gets the most lots possible in a subdivision. And while I think that these newer neighborhoods are producing a wonderful, modern, energy-efficient product, they are by no means what I would say is affordable to a good part of Cottonwood. If your budget for purchasing a home in this town is $200,000 or less, you are out of luck in any new subdivision. In fact, when I did a search for single-family residences under 200,000 this morning, there were three. One is unfinancable. I'm almost done, I promise. I have lived most of my life in Mingus Park subdivision. It is comprised of approximately 179 properties, a diverse, mixed-use neighborhood. It includes C1, R3, and mostly R1. The problem is the majority of the properties do not contain the characteristics of an R1 zone, making 85% of the properties non-conforming. 85%. 122 lots out of 179. For instance, a property in a C1 zone with a residence would be considered non-conforming. 45, 31% have manufactured homes. 64, 40% are non-conforming due to setbacks. At least eight have guest houses. 25 are multifamily, which is about 17%, and that's within the R1 zone. A few within the R1 zone are boarding houses, totally non-conforming. 22 are Main Street properties, and 14 are vacant lots. Out of the 14 vacant lots, in my opinion, 11 of those will most likely be developed as multifamily. This neighborhood meets all the characteristics of an R4 neighborhood. The city has taken on a no-new-manufactured-home policy in recent years, so these older neighborhoods that should be R4 and could allow for some affordable development cannot. Further, those wanting to improve their property with a remodel project are denied because the property is non-conforming by no fault of the property owner, leaving old neighborhoods to simply get older. The zoning administrator and staff should be allowed to approve projects in these older neighborhoods for the better of the neighborhood and for the better of the community. This might include manufactured housing, multi-generational homes, lot splitting, setback adjustments on existing product, properties, et cetera. Old Town, for instance, is great, good job, but there's the whole rest of the city out there that needs your attention. Maybe down payment assistance programs, grants for lower-income households that choose to develop in older neighborhoods, or matching down payment grants. In closing, the city has done a great job in supporting the revitalization of Old Town. I support the idea to, to vacate city-occupied properties in Old Town and relocate all of those to one space. My opinion is the area off of Sixth Street where so many existing city services are now. In particular, the location that is currently the county building should be looked at. I'm also in favor of considering the purchase of the Roughcut Building, if it would house all the city services and make long-term sense. I support promoting tourism, most popular, or bringing more popular events such as Thunder Valley Rally and Walking on Main. And I really hope you will extend a handout to all the small businesses of Cottonwood. Ask them what they need. Those not located in Old Town can sometimes feel left out and unsupported. Let's be reminded that they are the majority. They are doing an awesome job as homeowners, taxpayers, and employers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Unruh.
And thanks for letting me finish.
You're welcome. Did you get all that?
I did.
Okay. All right.
I could repeat it if you need.
Thank you. Okay, so next on, anyone else here tonight to address the council? Okay. Because she took up all your time, so you can't. All right, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. I would move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 19, 2019, regular meeting of March 5, 2019, and special meeting of March 7, 2019.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Hulse seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes are approved. Now we move on to the consent agenda, and we have three items tonight under the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. So I'll read the items, and first up is Resolution Number 2988 authorizing the submission of a grant proposal in connection with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety fiscal year 2020 funding cycle for selective traffic enforcement patrol overtime costs. Second item is Resolution Number 2989 authorizing the Police Department to submit a fiscal year 2020 grant proposal to the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, seeking funds to cover overtime expenses associated with the Department's DUI Task Force Detail, and Resolution Number 2990 authorizing the submission of a grant proposal in connection with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety fiscal year 2020 funding cycle for selective traffic enforcement speed signs. Any member of the council like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Any member of the public like to pull an item? Okay. Do we hear a motion?
Motion. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Hargie made the motion, Councilmember Althouse seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. Now we roll into new business, five items tonight under new business. First item is Resolution Number 2991 and 2992, appointing members to the city's personnel board.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Wilber, your HR Director here. We have two book seats currently available on the Personnel Board due to expiring terms. The advertised for the, for the two positions, we received only two applicants, so we didn't do the normal blind review process because we didn't have more applicants than seats available. Both applicants, Joyce Oswald and Dave Myers, are qualified for, for serving on our Personnel Board. They both live within the city limits, the incorporated limits, and they are both here this evening to introduce themselves to you.
Very good, thank you. Why don't we have Ms. Oswald come up and introduce herself?
I'll read it.
Thanks for being here, and thanks for volunteering your time.
Thank you all. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve on the Personnel Board. I had the pleasure of serving as an interim for the last six months, and obviously am excited about continuing in a permanent role.
Very good. What were some of the highlights for the last six months?
Well, we only had one meeting.
Right.
And I'm hoping we have a whole.
That's a highlight.
But please don't, don't blame Amanda after she told me all the things that she's responsible for, sir. I understand why we only had one meeting.
Right.
And I'm looking forward to having many more and helping Amanda.
Well, good.
As much as possible.
Very good. We're happy you're stepping up again, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Myers?
Evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening. What is it that interests you to serve on this most exciting board?
I'm passionate about local service. Previously, applied for a hotly contested planning and zoning seat, and the odds were better in my favor for this one.
Very good. It's certainly not the most active board, but...
If I can add, Mr. Mayor, I, the success of this commission is to meet as few times as possible. If we're doing our job right, they don't meet very often, so...
There is one board that meets, that beats them for least meetings, though.
Board of Adjustment, yes.
Boards and adjustments, so...
Yep. Well, thank you very much for, for applying, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions from council for any of the applicants?
You ready?
All right, yes.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2991, reappointing Joyce Oswald, and Resolution Number 2992, appointing Dave Myers, members of the city's Personnel Board.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Althouse made the motion, and Councilmember Matthews seconded it. Could please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Or Councilmember Hargie?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
A motion carried.
All right. So I just learned tonight that even though for the last 13 or some years that I've served, we don't actually have to read the resolutions twice, in case you're wondering. So we're just going to not read them twice, and we'll be out here a lot more quickly.
Actually, resolutions are only read once, if at all. I mean, read aloud, and, and you're not required to do that.
We've known that a long, long time ago.
Nobody asked.
Yeah, right. Now I'm wondering what else is, is there out there that we can streamline? Okay, congratulations to both of you, thank you. All right, next up is consideration of establishing a designated school zone on Mingus Avenue between Willard and Sixth Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Robert Winnicky, City Engineer. What I have before you tonight is considering establishing a school zone on Mingus Avenue between Sixth and Willard. Obviously, we've had a lot of changes on that stretch here in the past year and a half, two years basically, with the reconstruction of the roadway. We have the mid-block crossing, we're going to be working on getting that flashing beacon installed there. And then the school went ahead and changed the school. So, you know, before we were just middle school, seventh, eighth graders, now we've got K-38. So larger student population, they see the potential for more kids crossing there, and we have a concern. So they wrote me a letter in August of last year to request that we consider looking at a school zone. That requires a speed study and a whole bunch of other things, but in August of last year, we had just finished Mingus Avenue. So we had to give Mingus Avenue a little bit of time to stabilize, kind of see how it's going to function, how people use it and everything else. Well, we did that in September, went out and did a speed study, and we found that speeds from one direction are where we have it signed at 25 miles an hour, the other direction not so much, traffic's traveling about 35 to 38 miles per hour, which unfortunately is, you know, kind of the nature. People see a risk, and they assess it, and they drive accordingly. It's kind of how these things are set up. Well, we also did a pedestrian count to see how many kids cross the street. And we found, first day we went out, it was a half-day. Totally forgot that on Wednesdays to get out early, so, you know, tried to catch the 3:30 time, and that didn't work. So we had to go ahead and reschedule and get that date a little bit later on in the year. Well, we got that in October, finalized all the data at that point, and analyzed it, and came back with the option to look at actually establishing a speed zone. It seems like there is sufficient issues out there to warrant this with the increased student population, the speeds that we're seeing, and just the general concern. So what I put together in your packet is a report that basically says, you know, this was the issue that we had from the school. Of course, we all know that within one mile of the school, the students can't ride the bus, they have to walk or be dropped off by their parents. So we have a large potential population there that could be at risk. So what we did is looked at what we could do and where the area would be ideal. One of the thoughts from the school district was, let's make all of Mingus a school zone. That would be great, but it really doesn't serve that function when you get closer to Main Street. So the, the report kind of scaled that back a little bit. So what I'm recommending is we institute a school zone from Sixth Street to Willard, including the Roundabout, and then it would actually extend down Sixth Street a little bit to basically go ahead and encompass that, so people are aware of it before they get to the intersection. And the school zone would be effective during the times, greatest times of use for the school. So Monday through Friday, 7:30, 8:30, and then I think it's 2:30 to 3:30 that I have in the report. So otherwise, when school's not in session, the speed zones revert back to 25 miles per hour. So I'd like to see if you are favorable to this and if we'd like to move forward with this or not.
Any questions from council? I just have one question on the, do you have any counts on pedestrian traffic from Tenth Street coming onto Mingus?
That I did not get in the study. It was, I kind of looked at it being a little far outside. I should have looked at that as well, but I can easily get that.
I'm only just curious, because it seems like that neighborhood has a lot of children that walk up.
Definitely.
And Tenth Street seems to be, you know, the conduit that gets them to Mingus and up.
Definitely. So I can, I can look at that if you'd like me to, that's fine.
Just curious if the numbers warranted it, if the school zone shouldn't start there.
Right. That's a good question.
But just a thought.
I have a question.
Please.
If you're doing just two hours a day for the school zone?
Yes.
How are we going to notify the public? I mean, I'm thinking about like Daniel Bright, where they post the school zone from time like 7:30 all the way to 3:30, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. It's a school zone that whole time.
Right.
We're not going to do that on Mingus. How are we going to change so that people know when they're in the school zone and when they're not?
The, the thought would be is that would be encompassed on the sign itself, that where the school zone begins, it would have the effective times right there, so you would actually see that as you enter that zone. And we can also go through a public notification campaign to help people realize that this is something that we're looking to go ahead and change.
Okay.
How do you then deal with, with the half-days?
The half-days? In that case, technically, it would still be effective in that second hour in the afternoon. So because, you know, the Monday through Friday would establish that zone, I would think that if somebody did get a ticket during that timeframe, they might be able to contest that.
Yeah, because a lot of times you see when children are present.
Yes.
On the signage.
Yeah.
I guess my question is because the signage says 7:30 to 8:30, and then 2:30 to 3:30.
Right.
But if it's a half-day, wouldn't they be getting out at noon? I don't have children, so I'm asking.
Yeah, they do get a little early. So I might need to look at the wording on that a little bit and maybe change that.
Yeah, maybe when children are present or, or something, just because...
No, that's fair.
I know that they, and, you know, they do have a...
Yes, they do.
Not a significant, but a good amount of half-days and, you know, parent-teacher conference days and stuff like that.
If they go 20, when they can go 25, all the better.
That's, that's fair.
Otherwise, I think it's a, it's a great idea. I just, I, I do agree maybe the, the times that should say, you know, when children are present or something.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion.
I think mostly just the awareness is going to be a huge factor, so.
Right. Good.
Any other comments from council?
No, I think it's a good idea, as long as we are... I, I do agree with Councilmember Althouse. The whole point is to help increase safety for our kids, and if we're, if we implement a school zone and they're let out two hours before the school zone, that's counterintuitive.
Good point.
Otherwise, I think it's great, and thank you for, you know, the research background and the bringing this to the council.
One other question for you.
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible to put a flash and caution light so it would... Would it be possible to put a flash and caution light, so it would say "School Zone" when light flashing, like you see in many communities?
Yeah, that is an option we could look at, yes.
So that you could vary that on an early release day or when they have something special?
We could look at something like that. A lot of times, you know, we can program those. They are battery-operated, so they're a little bit more expensive. But that is definitely something we could look at.
I'm just concerned...
Yeah.
People are gonna get stopped when they don't realize that it's still a school zone.
That's fair.
So, thank you. Otherwise, it's good.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, we can, in the management report, I'll send out a picture of the updated signage to give council a look before we actually put 'em up.
Okay. That's, that sounds good.
You ready for a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to establish a school zone along Mingus Avenue in accordance with the recommendations established by the city engineer and direct staff to install the necessary signage to implement this special enforcement zone. I'll second.
Okay, great. So, we have Vice Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Naren seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hargie?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Naren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
And Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is the Cottonwood Police Department's annual report for 2018. Evening, Chief.
Chief. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. My name's Steve Gazell. I'm the Cottonwood City Police Chief. Tonight, we would like to present our annual report, and for those citizens that aren't familiar with it, and our new council members, this is the second year that we've presented such a document. For the public's awareness, we do publish, and it is on our website, a five-year strategic plan, which we just completed the second year of that five-year plan. That plan is tied to your annual report that you see before you. For those council members that were here last year, the format has changed slightly, but it's similar. You do have a PowerPoint in your file, which is very rudimentary and to respect your time, we felt we'd prefer to be nimble and just leave that title slide up, and we'll walk you through the report. Our presentation will not follow the order of your PowerPoint that you see there, just FYI. I'm good, thank you. It'll slow me down. I'm on a 12-step program to try to get these things down a little quicker.
I was a little surprised to see how much you had pared down the presentations.
Uh, okay. So, we'll see if I meet that objective, that personal objective. So, certainly, we wanna provide you and the public plenty of information on what your police department has been up to for the last year. But we also, in American policing, there's never been a greater need for transparency, and this is a tool to reflective of that need, to retain that level of transparency with the public that we serve, being the business that we're in. So, what you will see, and again, I will urge the public, any public that's watching or will watch this, go to our website. It will be posted there tomorrow. That's our objective, to post it there tomorrow. You'll also find our strategic plan as well, which is always there, which I'll remind everyone is a living document. It does change. And I'll move you quickly through this. I'm joined tonight by Commander Jody McCouch. So, what I intend to do is just provide some overarching commentary on some of our programs and outputs, and I'll turn it over to the commander to talk about crime trends in the city, which are always of, naturally of interest to our citizenry. The report itself, for those that are interested in the content, as far as transparency goes, we do include a use-of-force summary that demonstrates, kind of underscores the program and the process of the police department. And when our officers do find it necessary to use force in the course of their duties, there is a review process, and we do have the summary of those findings in our report. We touch on personnel investigations.
Excuse me?
And I will assure the public that no one polices their employees more than the police or better than the police. We're very good at it, and personal accountability is a bedrock of American policing. Organizational workload outcomes are included in the report, and again, our strategic plan annual report, both initiatives that have been closed out and accomplished. And this year, you'll find a difference from last year. We included, thought it was important that you also see initiatives that were deferred. And although in the report, you don't have the reason, the majority of those are for funding. There's funding needs tied to a number of those, and some of the other ones may have been timing issues or other variables that precluded us from closing them out within the calendar year. Also, within the report, I'll use the time to stump for our Cottonwood Cares Program and Safe Shopper, Safe Community Programs, both highly successful partnerships with nonprofits and our business community in the Chamber of Commerce. If you want more information, go there. What you don't see in there is our Alternating Sencing Program, which is primarily driven by our fantastic city prosecutor's office. We are considering including those statistics for next year, provided that our city prosecutor is amenable to that, which we believe that he would be, as it's just a phenomenal program with outstanding outcomes that help divert people away from the criminal justice system for positive outcomes whenever possible. So, there's a win-win for the community and the individual. One of our marquee programs is also explained in this book and also, or in our document, and also can be found on our PD website, and that's our Neighborhood Officer Program, which has been up and running for a couple of years. We've divided the city into nine neighborhoods, is what we call them, which are areas of responsibility for our officers to solve problems solved, and a direct connection for our citizens that own businesses and/or live in those respective, what we call neighborhoods. They have a direct connection to the police department rather than picking up the phone and talking to someone that they will never see, and getting the officers that are available at the time. So, we could use your help and the public's help in furthering that program. So, I, and we get tremendous positive feedback, I do personally, from the public on that program. But we're still working through ingraining in our culture and also the communities, making them aware that this is available to them. Later this year, as it pertains to that program, we will be doing Neighborhood Officer Walkabouts. So, our officers assigned to these respective neighborhoods will actually get out of their cars, and they will enjoy a fleeting positive moment of policing and contact our citizens in their respective neighborhoods, and market the program, and listen to feedback that they get. Also, reflected in the book, I keep calling it a book, in our annual report, you can connect with the police department through our Facebook page. What's not included in there is, we neglected to include the new, relatively new, the City App. You can, there's a couple of tiles in there that connect you straight to the police department. And we'll also, there's the new Code Red Emergency Notification, which we're in partnership with Yavapai County Sheriff's Department, and would urge our citizens to go to this document and find out how they can sign up to receive emergency notifications, no spam emergency notifications when needed. Very simple and easy to do. So, on the programmatic side, continuing, our Victims Rights Advocacy Program is now in its second year. I feel the council members that have been in place for that time are aware that this is a completely, it's federal pass-through money, completely grant-funded, and we expect to hold that grant for the next year and a half. And I'll use this moment to underscore the success that's already been demonstrated by this program. This, that calendar year, 2018, we've served 290 citizens that have been victimized in our city. And our level of service is significantly higher than it was before as far as paying deference to victims, and rather than focusing almost exclusively on suspects, which is historically what the police are, and we continue to be very good at that. But we're getting better at addressing and helping our victims with that program. Additionally, we're about to pick up a highly, highly qualified volunteer to bolster our effectiveness in that program. But I will tell you, a year and a half, we may or may not get that grant funding renewed. And if we don't, you will see your police team strongly advocating to place that at the highest priority so we continue, so we can continue providing the level of service that we do to people victimized in our city. You'll also see in the report an annual use-of-force summary. We had 16,500, give or take a few, what we call incidents or contacts. Can also be called calls for service. Of those incidents, we had 1,034 arrests compared to 959 the previous year, so we're up a little bit on arrests. Twenty-one in 2018, twenty-one out of 16,500 contacts involve some level of force. So, that's affirmation that our officers are very well-trained. I get comments routinely on their ability to exercise the gift of gap and avoid use of force whenever possible. Unfortunately, we're in a business where sometimes that can't be avoided. Our phenomenal communication center, both in the facility and as far as our talented staff, that handles both our police and fire department, but also a number of other public safety subscribers, virtually all of them being the large fire districts in the Verde Valley, handled 24,00911 calls last year, sixteen, like I mentioned, 16,500 law enforcement calls, which is just under about 2,000 more calls than 2017. So, our calls for service have gone up. For a smaller agency, that's pretty significant, around 2,000 calls. They have also handled 11,000 medical, 173 rescues, twelve, around 1,300 fires, 743 collisions, 2,100 public assists. And a little-known factoid, at least at this point, they process burn permits, and they handled 7,190 burn permit activations, which is, most of those numbers are on par with 2017, with the exception of calls for service. Those have gone for law enforcement. Our comm center continuing became the 10th, only the 10th center in Arizona to national, and 295th in the nation to receive certification from the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, dubbed Missing Kids Readiness Program Member, which requires all personnel to complete a specialized training course, policy evaluation, and managerial training, putting us in the, obviously, a very elite percentage across the nation. As far as the strategic plan goes, again, there's a direct tie here, or we have five overarching strategic directives. Number one, will always be a strategic directive, and it should be for any police department, and that's what is our mission. Our mission is to reduce crime. Number two is promote organizational excellence. Number three is strengthen relationships. Number four is enhance traffic safety. Number five, enhance technology solutions. Number six, enhance infrastructure. This last year, we completed 39 of these initiatives. When I was before you, last year, we completed, I wanna say it was 70. It was far more than that, but that included about a year and a half of startup, where we had a whole bunch of accomplishments on the front end. So, now you'll see that kind of slow down, and you will not see the number that you had last year. We'll be more consistent with this number. Those initiatives included everything. I'm not gonna go through them. They're in your packet, but they included everything from automating our policy manual, which is a legacy project for us, contemporary, state-of-the-art service that allows us to follow policies that are overseen by practitioners that are experts in these fields, that reduce our liability exposure and ensure that we are following the most contemporary American policing policies in the country. From that to, you know, something as simple as posting our Neighborhood Officer Map on our website. As far as deferrals, we've deferred 23 initiatives last year. Thirteen of those were tied to a lack of funding, and we obviously realize the city doesn't have an endless bank account, and there are certainly priorities throughout the city that tend to take precedence. That list is also included in your report. Council members have any questions for me before I bring up Commander McCouch? I'll come up afterwards if you think of anything. If you don't have anything, no.
I do have one that kinda comes up here. And looking at these graphs, it seems like a lot of these subcategories of criminal offenses have gone up. I mean, is that a result? Do you think, is crime increasing, or are you guys just doing more enforcement?
If you could hang on to that question, Commander McCouch will cover that, and we'll make sure we answer that question. Thank you.
Just curious. Thanks.
Any other questions from council for the chief?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. Commander Jody McCouch, and part of the chief's 12th step. And tonight, I'll be going over some of the highlights from our annual report. Aggravated assaults generally remain the same on total number. However, we did see an increase in other weapon assaults as opposed to the decrease in the firearms and knives. And other weapons could be bats. They could be a beer bottle or something that someone uses or fashions as a, uses as a weapon to assault someone else. Our aggravated assaults on police officers have shown a steady decrease over the last three years, and we believe that's likely because of the use of body-worn cameras and increased officer safety. Our thefts have steadily decreased. Most importantly, shoplifting, and we likely, I'm sorry, let me back up. Shoplifting has steadily decreased, and likely due to asset protection in Walmart. They're our number-one contributor to shoplifting cases in the city. So, they've seen a decline in reports there as they've increased their asset protection, and they've instilled the people who check your receipts as you're walking out the door, which has become very helpful. Overall, reported thefts have increased. Although many go unreported, we believe that perhaps the Neighborhood Officer Program has established the connection with some of the citizens where they felt more freely to contact the police department. A lot of times, people won't report because they think, oh, it's never gonna get solved, or the loss was somewhat insignificant to them, and they don't think that they should report it. Theft from a vehicle has declined. We would like to think that more of the public is securing their vehicles. A lot of the thefts that we see from motor vehicles are from unlocked cars, where in the past, they'd seen a lot of forced break-in in the vehicles, and sometimes those are categorized as a burglary as well. So, sometimes you'll see our stats, like the theft might decrease from motor vehicle, but we might see an increase of burglary, depending on how the officer categorizes that. So, and some of that will change as the federal government mandates us to change from uniform crime reporting to national incident-based reporting system, which is more specific. So, in the future, probably in two years from now, we'll have a lot better data sets to share with you as far as crime trends go. But for now, we'd like to think that the public is securing their vehicles, and we're happy about that. Burglary. So, we've seen an increase in residential burglary reports, and burglary is a scary term. Many times, people think of, you know, the Hollywood burglar, just lurking about in your neighborhood and breaking into someone that they don't know. Oftentimes, what we've seen during investigation of burglary reports, it's often an acquaintance. It could be a utility worker or landscaper, or someone that's had some contact with you or your residence and is familiar with what you might have inside. So, while those other burglaries do exist, primarily, most of them are someone that's an acquaintance or a relative or a friend, or someone the victim knows. And also, just to define, the statute for burglary is also entering or remaining unlawfully in a non-residential structure or fenced commercial yard or residential yard with the intent to commit theft or any felony they're in. So, they don't actually have to break into your residence. It could be your storage shed in the backyard, or it could be ornaments from your front yard if it's fenced. Moving on to frauds, we've seen an increase in fraud, a marked rise in phishing and scams, primarily through telephone and email. And a lot of these originate in other countries. The internet has made that easy for people to ghost calls, and I've had people call me back and say, you just tried to call me, and it wasn't actually me. It was just someone using my number through some app or something to try to victimize somebody. So, if you believe that you've been a victim of fraud, we'd like to hear from you. Contact the Cottonwood Police Department. If it's a local crime, we think that there are leads locally, then we'll investigate it. If we think it's international, then we're gonna refer you to the Arizona Attorney General's Office, and you can also file a claim with them or a report online at www.AZAG.gov. General's Office, and you can also file a claim with them, or a report online at www.a-z-a-g.gov. Moving on to DUIs, we had a significant increase in DUI investigations, which is likely the result of an influx of new officers assigned to our night shift. They're ambitiously enforcing our Arizona traffic laws, and oftentimes, that segues into other criminal investigations, such as DUI and drugs. Our drug violations have seen an increase, with a noticeable increase in marijuana and methamphetamine cases. Nationwide, methamphetamine is at an all-time high, as reported by the DA. It's become cheaper and more potent as it crosses the Mexican border into the US, and they're mass-producing it in super labs and distributing it through existing heroin and cocaine networks. So we've obviously made it difficult for them to purchase the prescription medicine or the over-the-counter medicines locally, so now they're developing it in super labs, and they're making it cheaper, and they're making it better and stronger. So while many crimes go unreported, we want to instill a see-something and say-something culture in Cottonwood. Please call if you think you need us. Overall, Cottonwood is a safe city, and we enjoy a supportive community, city, and other stakeholder organizations. One of the other highlights that I'd like to talk about is our volunteers. We have citizens on patrol volunteers, and we have ten of them currently, and they've, in this last year, they donated one thousand four hundred and seventeen hours on patrol in assisting the police department with a variety of incidents and public events. They're certainly a valuable asset to the police department and the community. We also have a criminal investigations department volunteer, who primarily helps the CIU. He donated one thousand one hundred and forty-four hours to a variety of special investigations and department initiatives, to include his citizens on patrol, a very good asset. And always, the department is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested, they can contact Sergeant Monica Calt or myself, and we can share the details with them. To conclude, this concludes our presentation. Does the mayor or council have any questions for myself or the chief?
Any questions?
I think you've answered them. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thanks for your hard work. Okay, then, we will then move on to a recap of the 2018 Thunder Valley Rally event.
Mr. Mayor, council, we're just getting things queued up here. Hezekiah Allen with the Parks Recreation Department, and the Parks Recreation Department has been running this program since 2011. I'll be giving a short recap of the event this past year. The recap will summarize the financials and some performance data, and the goal is to make sure council is informed on the status of TBR and how it went this past year. First and foremost is the TBR committee. This program would not be possible without these folks. They provide a critical flow of information from the areas of their expertise, whether it be motorcycles, the crowd, what they like to see. They're more of an advisory board for the program, and a lot of these folks have been with us since the beginning, so it's exciting to see. Also, we've got Chief Kirkdahl, Commander McCouch, Colleen Gilboy, and some folks, Jody Florado, Joni Westcott, and Chief Alumuma, who have been involved with this program and in the information flow. Our goals that were set by the TBR committee for 2018 were to operate a smooth, safe, and economically impactful event, grow attendance by five percent, obtain additional large-scale sponsors by twenty percent, which we reached, increase the debt loss gap to a hundred percent, diversify offered programs, provide opportunities for local businesses to garner additional foot traffic, and to streamline parking and transportation, diversify and add revenue sources, and increase camping by a hundred percent. So basically, they looked at the prior year, 2017. The first thing we do every year when we kick off is we look at our five-year plan, and then we develop our goals for the following year. So sponsorship for this year, it's impressive when you look at, Cottonwood is a town of eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety people, and this program raised forty-three thousand five hundred dollars in cash sponsors. Those are actual cash sponsors, a lot of them local, some from the Phoenix area, and a lot of these folks have been with us from the beginning. Our goal has never depended to see how many sponsors we can get, it's to see how many sponsors we can get to retain and stay with us, and then grow up through the different Vendor rentals for 2018 was at fifteen thousand three hundred and ten, which is higher than 2017. Jack Teal and our department does a great job with vendor recruitment, and also working with the vendors. Poker Run this year, you can see the numbers have kind of gone down, and then they've gone up. One of the things we changed when we took the event over from the Cliff Castle Casino is, the marquee event with Cliff Castle Casino was the poker run, and they would take them on the Mormon Lake route, they would be gone for four hours, then they would come back to the casino. We felt that, let's do a shorter ride, keep the folks here more local, and then have them come back to the events where they can hang out and see what Cottonwood's about. So that's why we've never been too concerned about the numbers, as long as the revenue kind of stays where it's manageable. Merchandise sales, for 2018, our gross was twelve thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars, with their net being four thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Miranda Yoke and our team handles this, does a fantastic job. What's amazing, and this program is a day and a half, and it raises over twelve thousand dollars in t-shirt sales. Bar sales and collections for 2018 was eighteen thousand seven hundred and six dollars. And so what happens on this process is that the Military Service Park takes liquor license out, they provide liquor liability insurance along with EPI, which is a company out of the Flagstaff area, and they manage the bars. And then after everything's paid, after Military Service Park is paid, then the city has cut their check. So total bar collections for the weekend is probably closer to sixty thousand dollars for a day and a half. Weekend passes for 2018 came in at forty-five thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars, down slightly from 2017, and we feel, TBR committee feels largely, that's due to the national act of not having the notoriety and the draw of the previous year. Charity split, TBR and the committee has always prided itself on supporting local charities. As a result, if TBR provides an opportunity for a charity, then there's an obligation to give twenty percent back to the event, just as a good favor. Parking and camping is something we started new in 2017. What we heard consistently is that hotels are booked for not only this year, but years in advance, and how do I get a hotel? Where can I sleep? And so, we started camping. But we wanted to make sure that we didn't compete with Dead Horse State Park, or Fairgrounds, or Thousand Trails, or anybody else. So prior to starting this, the TBR committee reached out to those partners, found out that they were already booked, and so we saw an opportunity, and we started the Freedom Bird Entertainment Campground Park. Freedom Bird is the plane that you would get on when you came back from your tour duty. 2018 was five thousand eight hundred and four dollars in camping, and four thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars in parking. Just for a reference park, reference number, parking is five dollars a car, raised four thousand dollars. So approximate daily attendance, and I caution approximate, 2018 estimate is around three thousand for Friday, around four thousand for Saturday, non-paid attendees, those are vendors, folks going down to Old Town, where there's no necessarily gate. So total attendance for the weekend, eight thousand five hundred. Now, that's not eight thousand five hundred different people, that's, you add up the days, user visits, that's how we get that number. At the bottom, you'll see shuttle numbers, 2018, one thousand one hundred and ninety-seven, largely because the event was mostly located at the old, or the Riverfront Park. Thunder Valley Rally charities, again, TBR committee prides itself on supporting local charities. We started overseeing the program in 2011. Since 2015, the program has raised over a hundred thousand dollars for local charities. Vendor charities, a thousand dollars. Mingus Union Basketball, one thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars. MUS Softball, seven hundred and fifty. Verde Valley Fairgrounds, that should be eight hundred dollars, not eight thousand, my apologies. Cottonwood Fire Foundation, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Military Service Park, nine thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Mingus Wrestling slash MUS Sports, two thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The numbers, here's the balance sheet. Revenues came in at a hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars. We're still waiting on one sponsor for that number. TBR direct expenses, materials and supplies, no staffing, just materials and supplies, a hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars. When you add in the staffing, which is broke up under each department, is where that's funded, where that's budgeted for. Total expenses and indirect salaries, so that's not only salaries day of, that's salaries leading up to the event, and that's salaried employees and actual hourly employees. So, for example, I'm salary, and I'm still included in that. And so if the program didn't exist, those costs would still be there. Kind of hard to see. So the net at the end of the day was a thirty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty-one dollar loss, so, little over thirty-eight thousand dollars. We, so, in the years past, we've worked with Northern Arizona University to do our study at the end of the event. This year, we just did Survey Monkey, kind of saved that money, asked the same questions, and I think got better results, because it wasn't at the event. It was something after the, it wasn't at the event, it was something after the event. These are kind of the, some of the numbers that people, so, how much do you, did you spend? Twelve point seven five percent said they spent five hundred dollars and above. Six point five nine said seven hundred dollars and above. And to the, right there, you can see ATM report for 2018. This is just three ATMs down at Riverfront Park for a day and a half, gave out over forty-six thousand dollars. Where did these folks come from? All over. Tucson, Idaho, Scottsdale, Kingman, California, Goodyear, and this is just, I think we had a hundred and eighty, a hundred and seventy people respond to the survey. When you look at the total impact on the community, estimated sales collections, and again, money here is around estimated, around forty thousand dollars for the weekend. Local charities raised money, over sixteen thousand dollars. Local and regional hotels booked, Dead Horse State Park campground booked, Verde Valley Campgrounds campground occupied, TBR campground occupied, local retail businesses obviously busy for the weekend. And then, as a result, all the marketing leading up to the program, and the marketing after the program, gives us notoriety as a destination point for the state of Arizona, for the southwest, the state, and regional. There's an individual, if anybody knows him, his name is Dennis Parks, he owns Cottonwood Motorsports. Not this year, but the year prior, he was complaining that his stomach hurt, and so he went to BBMC, and whatever happened, they told him to go home, turned it out to be pancreatic cancer. And this past year, he was given the TBR Ambassador Award for Thunder Valley Rally, so he's a special individual. That's the end. Any questions?
Questions from council? Okay.
Thank you.
We then move on to the moment we've all been waiting for, annual appointment of council representatives to various organizations, committees, and boards related to intergovernmental, regional, and other matters. And we've been putting this off, waiting for our newly-appointed council member, so that we can appoint you to every board that we present tonight.
I might have a few words about that.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry, I'm waiting for my page to load up here, so I can get to that. So, Matt, you want to run this, or you want me just to run down the list?
Go down the list, I guess.
Anyway, so, the idea being that, you know, we're invited, and sometimes expected, and sometimes honored to participate on a variety of boards and commissions, they're all listed here. So if you want, council, we just go down the list and see if we want to make any changes, or appoint people to, like I said, get...
Sure. Let's do it.
So first, first on the list is Northern Arizona Council of Governments, NACOG. I'm the one that goes, and Vice Mayor Allen was the alternate. This takes place quarterly, it's typically up in Flagstaff. I haven't had any issue attending, but I'm certainly open to another council member.
It's all yours.
I'll take the alternate, I've always got occasion to go up there if I get the opportunities.
Oh, yes, your daughter.
Right, yeah, no, and it, it's very interesting, so it's just, you know, you see how the money flows from the federal through the state to us. They deserve good lunch.
So we'll fight over it.
Yep. But, no, it's also, you know, you get to meet all the other elected officials from the four counties, northern counties, so, anyway, is there anyone that would like to serve, serve, Vice Mayor?
He, Councilmember Matthews already volunteered.
Volunteer to be alternate. Just want to reinstate this.
Do you want the first seat?
I'm happy to, but...
You know what, if you, I'll take the first seat. Like I said, any opportunity to go up there, I'll jump at it, so.
Great.
The next three years?
She's in a five-year program.
Okay.
Sure.
Maybe I'll be the alternate then?
Okay.
Did that work? Okay, did you get that? All right. All right, I'm doing good so far. So Northern Arizona Municipal Water Users Association, Councilmember Pfeifer was the council appointee, and I was the alternate. I've never once been to this meeting. I don't know why I'm looking at you, Ron, because I know you've probably never once been.
I've been here a long time, and, nope, I have no idea, Mayor.
Do you know anything about?
Tom is in the audience, and he can, he can help us out.
Do you attend as staff?
Yeah, there's two organizations here. One is a subgroup of the actual NAMWA group itself, and that's the Technical Advisory Committee, which I am the chairman of. So yes, I attend every month. The NAMWA board meetings are quarterly, and they're moved around, so you've got them in Sedona, Chino Valley, Prescott Valley, and Flagstaff. The next one will be in April, the next quarterly meeting, but that one is, they're not going to have a board meeting for that meeting, this will be the, the next quarterly one would be, I believe, in Flagstaff. It'll be in Chino Valley, rather. Like I said, they've got a technical advisory committee, and then they've got the board itself, board meets quarterly. They address water issues that pertain mostly to the municipalities, and issues of concern there. They're very active down at the legislature during the session, engaging in the water-related legislation that comes up from time to time. They've actually made a lot of inroads. They also interact quite a bit with the other WAAs, the other water users and associations, AMWA and SAWA. So those are the kind of things that they do. Councilman Pfeifer really didn't attend very many meetings I usually sat in for, so...
And when do they meet?
Quarterly.
I mean, at what time of day? Sorry.
Morning. They meet ten o'clock in the morning.
Perfect.
Typically, they run about two hours, ten to twelve.
Okay. All right, any takers?
I will be there no matter what, so...
Can, can I call in?
Yes, you can.
Okay. All right.
It's hard, and you know this as well, Mayor, several of us work, and to, you know, go to Chino Valley at ten o'clock, you know, during the workday, it's just, it's...
Yeah, it's a third Thursday of the month, is what it is, that quarterly, so, or third Friday, sorry.
Okay, well, I can commit to phoning in, but I would not be able to travel, just to be honest.
Yeah.
And I'm always there as a backup if you want, so...
Okay. All right, then, I don't know if we need an alternate for this or not?
I don't mind serving as an alternate, as long as there is that phone-in option, because it looks like there are some close Sedona-Clarkdale meetings, from what was in the packet.
There's a, yeah, Sedona is a quarterly meeting, there's Prescott Valley, Flagstaff, and Chino Valley are where the board meetings are actually held.
I must have misread. I don't mind serving as the alternate.
Okay. Did you get that, Matt? All right? Thank you. So Verde Valley Transportation Planning Organization, VVTPO?
I'm currently on that.
Okay.
And would volunteer to stay on for another year.
Okay.
I only went to one meeting and that was out of necessity, it was very informative. Our city engineer saved my bacon. Thank you for making me look good at the meeting because he was able to give the city update and helped me because I learned when we got there that I was the chair and supposed to run the meeting. I really appreciated his help, so I'd like to stay on that one.
Okay, great.
Are you still the chair?
No, they voted me off, I believe. Yes, yeah.
All right. Councilmember Alt House, would you mind being the alternate for that?
That's fine, because it's, even though it's, I, you know, made the comment about during, during the day, being here in town, I can be more flexible with going, you know, getting away.
All right.
It's traveling to Chino Valley and Prescott Valley, Flagstaff, I just can't do.
Got it. Okay, Area Agency on Aging, Region Three. This is an offshoot from NACOG, former Vice Mayor Allen was the council appointee and Alt House, you were the alternate?
I never attended, though Kyla always...
She always did?
Always went. I know nothing about this.
Okay.
Where do they meet?
Flagstaff.
Flagstaff.
Sure you'd phone in?
Probably, yes.
Since you asked. Looks like you have some interest.
I was curious where they met.
Well, considering my line of work, I think I could take this one.
Okay, can you, you'll be able to call in?
At least.
Okay. Very good. Is there anyone that would like to be an alternate, Councilmember Hulse?
I'll be the alternate.
Great. All right, did you get that, Matt? All right, we're knocking them down. Verde Valley Homeless Coalition, so I've been the, well, so I actually don't attend the coalition meetings, I'm on the board of the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition.
Right. I'm guessing that this means the general meetings that happen once a month?
I believe so, yeah.
And those are always on a Thursday at noon.
Okay. Do you attend those?
I was, and then I stopped.
Okay.
But I could, again.
Could you again?
Do it over lunch hour, because it's closed.
Okay. All right, is there anyone that would like to be a, an alternate for Councilmember Nairn?
I can do that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, did you get that, Matt?
Yep.
Okay, so Verde Valley Regional Economic Organization, I don't know if many recall, there was a time when they wanted elected leadership as part of their organization. I think when Councilmember, well, Vice Mayor now, Henry came on, there was some confusion and they were, sort of didn't want elected leadership. Now it sounds like they want that again, we had a meeting with them. I believe you volunteered to do that.
I did.
Okay. Does it all right with the rest of council if Vice Mayor Henry, okay, takes that, and then, is there anyone that would like to be an alternate? Well, we can't do an alternate, right?
We cannot.
They'll slap us on the wrist.
They...
Or worse.
Richard is on that committee also.
Who?
Richard Faust is also on that committee.
Okay, great. Okay, so that covers that, thank you. Cottonwood Personnel Board. Didn't we just, we just made this appointment?
Mr. Mayor, Council, the, a council member sits as an ex-officio member, they're a non-voting member when there are hearings, I think they sit on the, maybe the happier functions of the board and participate in those. But I would even recommend that they not attend any personnel board hearings, there's really no role for them in that until and unless the council makes a change in how that all works and we may be talking to you about that before too long.
So are we not going to appoint anyone for this?
I think probably on, I just wanted to advise you about how it practically works. I think the way you set up the commission itself and the code, there's a member of the council. And again, for those celebratory-type functions, that would be the role that the council member plays.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, we actually would like a council member, especially for the happier events. And they would not have to attend, as Steve has said, any of the personnel disciplinary hearings.
Got it.
They also do other things, though, they review personnel rules, they look at some happy stuff.
Okay.
So it would not be a bad idea to have a council member. It's one of those low-meeting options, so this would not be a strain on many, many.
Okay.
Some of the happier things we do is like selecting employee of the quarter.
Got it.
So we try to do at least quarterly meetings than we do employee of the year, so.
Okay.
Usually those types of things, it's like thirty minutes.
Got it.
Sometimes an hour if we're doing something with the personnel manual itself.
Okay. So then who would like to be happy for half an hour to...
I'll jump on it. I'll jump on it.
Okay. And an alternate?
I can, aren't I the alternate?
You are currently.
I can remain the alternate.
Okay. Does that sound good with everyone?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Oh, no, what's I? Oh, yeah, I am.
All right. Alternative Pension Board, I'm on that. Alternate was former Vice Mayor Allen.
We don't expect you to meet.
Okay.
If I'm not, so maybe one time if we get lucky.
We may, we may...
This is the one we've been trying to kill for like ever, right? For years and years.
Yeah, we had ways to put it, but hopefully the bill goes through, we're able to move that money over into our pensions.
It is stalled.
Yes.
It got held in the Rules Committee, I'm sorry to report.
Okay.
So as long as we still have that money, we're probably going to meet once a year in December.
Got it.
I won't permit it.
Okay. So then, Hulse will take that one and I can be the alternate?
Make a Christmas party out of it.
You're going to be the alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Okay, that's fine.
You'll meet for five minutes, probably.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board for Fire and Police, I'm on that. There's not an alternate, I don't know if there needs to be an alternate. This is another one of those boards that meets literally for five minutes?
And this doesn't have to be you, Mayor, the Rules call for you or a designee, so you're allowed to designate, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but you're allowed to designate someone else, so it doesn't have to be attended by the mayor himself.
Okay.
I know the Vice Mayor's on a lot of different things, but unless it's a conflict, I think that she might have a good, of course, she might be mad at me later, but if at all possible, she might fit into that need.
I thought it was only if you weren't present at this meeting. I don't mind serving at all.
Under new management.
If there was a compliment.
There is a compliment in there, yes, I think it's a good fit.
Right. The meetings are quick and I do call in for a lot of them and it works out. Works out fine for me, probably not for the poor folks on the other, on the other end. Okay. So then, okay, so you're the one, thank you. We don't need an alternate then, right?
No.
No, okay. The Boards and Committee Applicant Review Committee.
I'll just stay right there if you don't mind.
You're staying, okay, great. And then Vice Mayor Henry, you're the alternate, is that good?
That is good, unless somebody else wants to serve, I feel like I'm hogging some of these appointments, but I'm fine with serving as the alternate for that because that one we don't actually meet. It's easy to actually just review the paperwork, so.
Okay. All right, then we'll leave that as is. And Cottonwood Area Transit Advisory Committee, this was Councilmember Norman, I think she sort of just stayed with this committee throughout the years when it was NAPTA from forever ago. I didn't even know this was happening, that there was some advisory, Transit Advisory Committee, but...
The TAC is required under both ADOT and FTA, that we have a TAC and it does meet on a fairly regular basis. But it's usually, we've had Linda Norman, we just like a member there from the city because we talk a lot, not necessarily just camp, but we talk leagues and we talk about regional issues that we'd like to get working on.
Okay.
I'll do that.
You'll take that?
Sure.
And would you like to have an alternate for that?
That'd be splendid.
Okay. Would anyone like to volunteer for, to be the alternate?
I guess I'll do that.
Okay. Great. Well, that's it.
That's it.
Yeah. And councilmembers, if you are involved in any other boards, you know, that still are important for this council to have presence at, you know, feel free to bring them up and just keep adding to the list. All right, well, that was easy, thank you very much. If there's nothing else, then I move that we pay the claims.
Second.
Mayor made the motion, Vice Mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Mayor made the motion, I think many people seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.